Ralph Jeff.
He knows. Do I look distinguished? Last time I couldn't see anything, I was like... Here we go. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. The Board of Education is interested in encouraging members of the public to share their ideas, comments, and questions. Public participation opportunities will be available at the beginning and the end of this meeting, and as stated in board policy, no person shall speak for more than three minutes, and each period of public participation will be limited to 30 minutes. If you have any questions or concerns regarding matters on the consent agenda through the Items for Discussion and Action, items one through five, it may be important for you to utilize the first public participation opportunity. You may also send your feedback and questions to us through our email account, which is B O E at FarmingdaleSchools.org. Questions will be shared with members of the central administrative team who will respond in a timely fashion. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire, and/or if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. The nearest exit for the first five rows is through the doors on either side of the stage. Those in the rear of the auditorium should use the doors in the back of this room and then exit to the left. Please stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Deffanini, may we have your monthly update, please?
Absolutely. So, good evening, members of the Board of Education, members of the community. Couple of quick updates before we get into celebrating excellence portion of our meeting. Recently, obviously this past week, we just celebrated Halloween here in Farmingdale Schools. On top of, you know, we're going to have a chance as part of celebrating excellence to say thank you to all the people that were involved in putting on the Safe Halloween event that we had over the weekend, which was remarkable. Really did impact, in the end, thousands of our students and families from around the district. But just the general fanfare in the sense in the buildings was really awesome. Just nice to have those kinds of events back. Obviously, we've had our struggles over the course of the last six weeks for obvious reasons, and to have Halloween on the calendar and to have the kids just dressed up and celebrating and to feel the energy in the buildings was fantastic. So, it was really a great day. And the fanfare associated with Woodward Parkway and the seniors coming up from the high school, you know, and that tradition that has become a real big part of who we are as Dailers was also in full swing. The costumes were fantastic. There was all sorts of posts out there showcasing all the different costumes and the creativity that was used by our seniors. So, it was truly a remarkable day, as it always is, and just a little sense of normalcy here in Farmingdale, which was well received. I also put out a short little message, and I just wanted to reiterate that with the Cops and Treats event, and a special thank you to the Nassau County Police Department. It was another remarkable event over at Woodward Parkway. Nassau County Police Department selected Woodward Parkway this past year. They have that choice to pick one elementary school from Nassau County that they run this event. And again, just a really wonderful opportunity to bring some real positive life, you know, to one of our buildings and a way for our students to connect those people that are in service to our kids to, you know, the remarkable people that they are. They did a great job between the mounted police, the K-9. Highway was there, our pop officers were there, and then the fanfare at the end where the officers actually jumped out of the back of one of our, one of their trucks dressed up as Spider-Man and Batman and Captain America and Chewbacca was another just awesome, you know, moment for our kids. So, again, with thanks to the Nassau County Police Department for putting on what was a remarkable event. Two more things that I have. One is, this past month, we were able to head up to Albany. We were invited by the governor's office to be a part of a ceremony where her office and others up in the state of New York thanked the first responders that were there for us on September 21st and in the days after, providing service to our families. It was truly a remarkable event. Really appreciated being able to be a part of that, being able to see a lot of those people for the first time, you know, since myself and some of us up here were also up there up in Albany with a lot of our chaperones and teachers and our students themselves. So, it was a moving event. I thought it was really well done. Appreciate the governor for putting it on. But it doesn't take the place of our own season of thanks. And over the course of the next few weeks, we have a really special next couple of weeks planned out where we're going to actually take the time to travel up and thank not only those first responders again and give our parents and our students who want to travel, as well as our staff members who want to travel with us, to go up there and thank them and give them that opportunity to have some face time with the heroes that saved, in many instances, probably saved some lives while they were there with their remarkable heroism, but also thank the hospitals. We have people to thank here at the local level. Between our PTAs, a lot of our staff here were remarkable. We have people who are providing mental health-related services, you know, free of charge. We have K-9 companions who were remarkable. You know, you name it, there were people that were there, and we have a comprehensive list of every single group that helped us over the course of that stretch of time. And we're going to go on a season of thanks. We're going to spend as many days as is necessary together. Our students at the elementary level have been busy writing cards that are going to be put in nice Daler boxes that we're going to bring with us and then provide those cards of thanks to, you know, all of those remarkable people that helped us along the way. So, with thanks to the governor for doing what she did, but it doesn't take our responsibility off to actually go through that process ourselves. And that's going to be starting, not next week, but the week after, we'll start in full form, doing a lot of that work. Any questions on any of those items? I'm going to ask the board to join me in the front of the stage where we're going to do celebrating excellence. We have a few remarkable people in the crowd today that we're going to thank for, I've said remarkable a lot. A lot of fantastic people in the crowd that we're going to recognize for excellence. So, if the board could join me in the front. Okay, so we have some familiar faces in the crowd that know what this is all about. For those of you that don't, once per month at each Board of Education meeting, Board of Education thanks some of the remarkable people and the excellence that's actually occurred throughout our and across our school district by presenting this, these rewards, celebrating excellence rewards and pins. What we're going to do is, I'm going to read a little brief piece, talk a little bit about some of the groups. I'm going to invite up the leaders of those particular groups in order to read out the names of the students in question that did do something that's deserved of celebrating excellence. They'll come up. We'll have cards and pins to be able to hand out. You'll have a chance to meet the Board of Education, and then also we'll have an opportunity to take a picture at the end of the, that portion of the meeting with the Board of Education and all of those people that are called up to the stage. So, I'm going to start off with two very special people. Ms. Stillwell, Carla Stillwell in the crowd, come on up, Ms. Stillwell. So, within the last, within the last 10 days, our class of 2024 valedictorian and salutatorian were announced. Last month, Farmingdale High School revealed the names of its valedictorian and salutatorian for the class of 2024. There we go. Seamus Farrelane stood out as the valedictorian since he earned the highest cumulative GPA out of 394 students, while Alexa Frontino achieved the rank of salutatorian of the class of 2024. If they're in the crowd, please come on up. Congratulations to both students on this outstanding achievement. We wish them all the best for their future endeavors. Over the course of the next several months, we're going to have an opportunity to celebrate their achievements in a whole bunch of different kinds of ways. There's a salutatory and valedictorian breakfast that they're invited to where they get celebrated across Nassau County. There'll be articles written at the local papers about all of their achievements. I'm sure we're going to be hearing about their remarkable endeavors in college and beyond. One more big round of applause for two very remarkable students who have done something truly outstanding, setting themselves apart from their classmates for the class of 2024. Sam? Oh. Oh. I think I see their guidance counselors. I see Ms. Berry in the crowd. Wave hi. And Mrs. Lobianke, I think, is also out there as well. Thank you for your guidance and your leadership. It means a great deal to the students that you serve. Our next recognition is the College Board National Recognition. The following students at Farmingdale High School earned academic honors from the College Board National Recognition programs. These programs celebrate students' hard work in high school and showcase their strong academic performance. The academic honors for rural area, Black, Indigenous, and/or Latino students are an opportunity for students to share their strong academic achievements with colleges and scholarship programs that are seeking to recruit diverse talent. There's so much that makes the students here tonight unique. That's an asset to college and programs. The National Recognition Programs helps recognize students and find ways to celebrate just that. Eligible students apply on Big Future. They have a GPA of 3.5 or higher. They're the top 10% of the PSAT NMSQT assessment takers in each state for each program or have earned a score of three or higher in two or more AP exams. They either attend school in rural areas or small towns or identify as African-American, Black, Hispanic, Latino, or Indigenous Native American. Please join us in recognizing the following students, and I'm going to ask Ms. Stillwell to come up and read the names.
So, our first student for the College Board National Recognition Program is Jalen Umana. Our next recipient is Julia Rodriguez. Our fourth recipient is Luke Ferriello. And our fourth recipient is Marielle Guavada.
So, the next recognition is for the National Merit Scholarship Letter of Commendation. About 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Commended students are placed among the top 50,000 students who entered the 2024 competition by taking the 2022 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation recognizes commended students as they have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. These students represent a valuable national resource. Recognizing their accomplishments as well as the key role schools play in their academic development is vital to the advancement of educational excellence in our nation. We hope that this recognition will help to broaden their educational opportunities and encourage them as they continue their pursuit of academic success. We are delighted in recognizing the following two students on their remarkable performance. And I'm going to ask Ms. Stillwell once again to come up and read the names.
Thank you, it is my pleasure. First, Ryan Sweeney. So, just to put it in perspective, out of everyone across the nation that took their PSAT, these students are the top 34,000 in the country. So, it's quite significant. And our second honorary tonight is Ryan Abdam G.
I'm going to ask Jen, Sam, Mike, and Maureen, as well as Mary, to join me up here. The next award is for School Board of Education Recognition Week. So, it's our turn to recognize you, Suzanne. So, tearing over the basket to Jen because it is your turn to be recognized. So, the New York State School Boards Association recognized October 16th to the 20th as School Board Recognition Week. This is a time to promote awareness and understanding of the important work performed by local school boards, public schools from the bedrock of our communities and our country. Democracy thrives with educated citizens capable of critical thinking and civil discourse, and it is our local school boards who are ultimately responsible for student success. I can say on behalf of a very grateful central administrative team, we really do have an unbelievable Board of Education. They ask a lot of critical questions. They put us through our paces when we make recommendations, but at the same time, they find a way to be supportive and compassionate and heartfelt in what they do for us every single day. And I say this all the time, they do all of this free of charge. There is no financial benefit that our board members get as a result of being and serving the community on a regular basis. And they get sometimes a lot of the aggravation with not, with no financial support whatsoever. And it takes a remarkable person to do the work that you do every day. I know that I appreciate you on behalf of my team. We appreciate you. This community appreciates you. Congratulations and thank you so much for your service. So, we have another group to thank that does remarkable work. I mentioned them at the beginning portion of this meeting. Those that participated in what has turned into another institution here in Farmingdale. Deck the Hall's Breakfast has long been a pastime here and has really drawn a wonderful support from our community. Not to be outdone, though, is now our newly formed, which is now in several years, in our Safe Halloween event. So, Farmingdale High School's third annual Safe Halloween event was held on October 21st. It takes a lot of magic to pull off an event like Safe Halloween, and the theater program students spends weeks carefully planning every detail with many groups coming together to bring their vision to life. Congratulations to the Farmingdale High School Arts Honor Society, Real Harmony, Thespian Honor Society, Playcrafters, Spanish Honor Society, and the PTA for helping make this event a spellbinding success. I'm going to ask Mr. Beck to come join me up here to read the names of the students who were a part of this event. We love them too.
I'd also like to call Ms. Ramone up here too because for Art Honor Society, she should be up here also. So, while Amanda's coming up here. So, as Paul said, so this is our third year. The theater four students plan and put together this event, creating themed rooms. And no, no event for us would be complete Safe Halloween without the help of Art Honor Society and the art department that puts up all the decorations across the walls that you'll see if you come to the event. So, I want Ms. Ramone up here to also acknowledge her kids. So, I'm going to acknowledge the project managers, as we call them. There are theater four kids that plan. This year, there were 16 of them. I have a selection of them up here that should come up and get their award. So, we'll start with Audrey Anderson, JT Arpaio, Allison Bands, Emily Gabba, Kiara Gamas, Ava Golio, Allison Hernandez, El Libretto, and Ava Zimmick. We also have someone doing dual duty. So, also representing Thespian Honor Society that does our food drive, who is also a project manager, Joelle Casco. And then our PTA too. So, Kate Kelly and Gina, who both have really helped to contribute to our event, they also deserve some acknowledgement as well. And then Amanda, I'll give you your students. So, they, because it only went today, so do you know who it was?
Yeah. Okay, we have Libretto also. Leanna Libretto and Kira Moscasso. Kira, you here? Kira Moscasso.
And last, but certainly not least, do we have Mark in the crowd? Mark Wenzel? Is Mark Wenzel in the crowd? I don't think I saw him. Mark? No, right? I am going to hold off on our last recognizing excellence because I really want Mark to be here in order to be able to celebrate him and the wonderful things he's done for, not only, yes, community counseling, but also for our schools as he nears retirement at the end of this coming calendar year. So, I'm going to hold off on that last one, and we're going to pick back up with him to start off our December meeting. That's it for the celebrating excellence portion of our meeting. Congratulations to all of our students and their achievements, to all of our staff members, our PTA members for their achievements. Thank you so much. We aren't who we are. We are who we are because of all of you. And I invite you folks at this point in time to get back to doing whatever you have to do, homework, whatever it is. We're going to take a few brief minutes that you folks dismiss before we get on with the regular portion of our board meeting. Congratulations and thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Well done, MC Paul. You know? All right.
I think you should wave a little homework.
I think you should wave a little homework.
Thank you, Mr. Duffendini. I know they're all gone, but you know, when people ask what makes Farmingdale so great, it's really our kids. You know, these young men and women are so well-rounded, you know, they are amazing, from academics to music to sports to extracurriculars. They do so much, and they're so impressive, and we see it every month, we never get tired of doing this, because it really is a celebration of excellence. We have an excellent group of young men and women that are gonna represent this community very well in the years to come. So congrats to all you parents of these children and to all of our kids, because we really are doing amazing things here in Farmingdale. All right. Does the board have any questions before we move on from Mr. Duffendini?
No.
Okay. Thanks again, sir. At this time, we'd like to open the meeting for our first public participation session. As always, please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you come to the microphone, but now the meeting is yours.
Good evening. My name is Laura Focazio, F-O-C-A-Z-I-O. My address is 458 Atlantic Avenue, Massapequa Park. Earlier, I had sent an email to the Board of Education, and I just wanted to come tonight to follow up by formally requesting that the JV cheerleading team be allowed to become a competitive team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Patty Logedis, 509 Secatog Avenue. I also sent an email this morning, but just wanted to come in person and formally request that the JV team become a competitive one. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Allison Palazzo, 3 Lincoln Street, Farmingdale. I am currently the president of the Farmingdale Council of PTAs. The Council of PTA consists of seven units: Farmingdale High School, Howitt Middle School, Albany Avenue, Northside, Salzman, Woodward Parkway, and SEPTA. In honor of October's New York School Board Recognition Week, we wanted to take the opportunity to recognize and sincerely thank our Board of Education for all of your countless hours of hard work and dedication to all of the students in our district. We especially want to thank you for your heartfelt leadership in the weeks after our community experienced such a horrific tragedy. We are grateful for all that you do, and we walk beside you as volunteers with the mission to make students the focal point of all of our work. And we'd like to present you with a small token of appreciation from the PTA.
Before anyone else comes up, just respond quickly to the two women who came up to talk about JV cheer. Thank you for taking the opportunity to email us and for having the courage to come up here and speak with us. That is something that we will consider, we'll talk about it amongst ourselves, obviously with administration, but the request will be taken very seriously. We do thank you again for taking the time to not only write the emails, but to come down tonight to speak with us.
William Cadden, 46 Arch Avenue, Farmingdale. In going over the budget that you have on your website, it's kinda difficult to ascertain what goes where. So is there someplace that I could find out what account codes pertain to which particular units, such as which school's administration, maintenance, et cetera? Second question is, where might I find an organizational chart as opposed to the staffing detail that's on the website? Third question, is there a current list of, is there a list of the current capital projects similar to the one that was in the audited report for last year? With reference to your line item budget, what are institutional support? It seems to appear throughout the budget along with administrative, and it seems like an awful lot of institutional support, or, excuse me, instructional support. And lastly, what's the status with the high school pool now that this Taj Mahal of an aquatic center is open? Is that pool still active? Is it being used? And if so, why? Because I thought that was the reason that we built this thing over here. Thank you.
I'll start, Mr. Motisi can fill in the gap. So your first question was pertaining to account codes. If you actually look under that Business and Support Services tab that we had spoken about last month, and we invite you to make a phone call, we'd be happy to sit down with you to answer questions if you have them. That might be a better way of answering the questions more expeditiously than coming up at the microphone, but you're more than welcome to be here as well. The account codes, there's a tab that actually is for reading the budget. There's four different components to each of the individual line items. There's the function, the object, the location, and the program. And there's actually a detail that actually will show you how to read the budget, how to understand what a function, what an object, what a location and a program is, so that you can pick off which items you're looking to focus on. I would also ask that, again, if you're in there and you're taking a look at some of those tabs, one of the tabs in there also provides you with a detailed look at what we call a cost element summary, which breaks down the major codes, so you can actually see comparatively year over year in a truncated form, you know, how money was being spent based upon that. You asked another question about an organizational chart. Again, if you have questions with regard to the structure of our organization, we don't typically have an organizational chart available for the community, but if you had a question on that, happy to either answer that question, or you can again give my office a call, give the Office of HR a call. Mr. Ferretti, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have pertaining to the structure of how we're organized. Listing of capital projects, one of the presentations that are in that tab has a listing of capital projects that were a part of this year's budget, so you can certainly look at that, or again, Mr. Motisi is available to you if you'd like to reach out to his office. Instructional support, yep, there is a lot of money in instructional support, because instructional support is teaching. That is the actual code where we code the instructional staff, so that is all the teaching, teacher salaries and associated that goes into providing all of the programs that we provide. So you're gonna see most of the money in instructional support. And the last question has to do with the high school pool. The high school pool has been emptied, it is no longer being used. We did put in a permit to the State of New York to have the pool deconstructed. We're waiting to get back permission from the state to commence with that action. Once we do, we'll be able to take that pool down and continue to use the new pool that we have over here at Howitt Middle School.
Paul, can I just add one thing to that? On the website, Mr. Cadden, there's a, the Excel doc, which is the largest file, I think it's more towards the bottom, under the budget stuff. It's actually broken down by department, so you can see what's spent by each building, and it goes in location order, so when you refer back to that reading the budget tab that Mr. Duffendini was mentioning, it'll tell you, you know, Albany Avenue is location seven, Northside is location eight, and so on. So it is broken down by building and then by departments.
That's the 48-page document, correct?
Correct.
That's the one I was referring to for the account codes.
Anyone else like to come up? If not, I just wanna take a moment to thank the PTA. You came up here and thanked us, but we know that you guys are the true heroes of the community, all the work that you do. You're the lifeblood of the community, the eyes and the ears of all of us. I know as a parent, I learned so much from the PTAs throughout my years here. So we see what you do, we recognize what you do, and this community would not be what it is without you. So thank you guys for all that you do. You deserve a big hand yourselves. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the October 11th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 11th, 2023 regular meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Call for a motion to approve the minutes from the October 20th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 20th, 2023 special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I call for motion now to approve the minutes from the October 24th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 24th, 2023 special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mrs. Rogers, did we receive any correspondence this month?
Yes, Mr. Morales, the board received three emails regarding the JV cheer competition team.
Thank you. Are there any committee reports?
Lot of meetings this month. October 16th, we started the curriculum meeting, curriculum committee, excuse me, which is revolving around math this year. It's comprised of central administration, directors, teachers, coaches, board members, students, and parents. This week, or this month rather, we basically just reviewed the process and the overview of the committee tasks. October 13th, I'm going backwards a little bit, sorry about that. October 13th, I was in the policy committee. That'll be discussed tonight. All those items are up for discussion, which is homebound instruction, admission for non-resident students, and school safety and educational climate. October 23rd was the PTA council meeting. As Mr. Morales explained, we know how much goes on with our PTA, and the room is filled with such amazing parents and staff who advocate tremendously for our students. Lots going on in all the seven units, they do a great job communicating. I urge everybody to join their PTAs, to know what's going on and partake in some of the things, so you can be involved with your students. October 26th, I was at the Legislative Action Committee meeting. We met with assemblymen John Miculin and Mike Dorso, both very interested in our talking points from unfunded mandates to school safety and budgetary concerns. Our next meeting is with Senator Steve Rhodes on November 16th. And lastly, but not least, is October 25th, I was able to attend the SEPTA meet and greet, always well-attended. At least one building administrator was in attendance of all of our schools, our entire special ed administration, teachers, support staff, led by Lisa Klein, our president. Lots of stuff going on there too. Also advise people, if they can, to be a member of SEPTA. You do not need to be a special ed parent to be a member of that unit. It's a phenomenal unit and a win-win for all students. And I think that's it for me.
Oops. Thank you Suzanne for filling in on the SEPTA meet and greet council meeting policy legislative action. So I have Farmingdale Youth Council, all our programs are up and running, they're gonna be starting swim two soon. You can find all the programs on the FarmingdaleYouthCouncil.org website. And just a note for our winter program, the winter program recreation, there is one from nine to 12 at Salzman, and there's another one from 12 to three at Woodward Parkway. Woodward Parkway has a large group of students that are scheduled to attend there. We do have the program which I mentioned at Salzman earlier in the morning. We do need more students there. We are going to run the program, it was iffy, but we have an amount now that we can run the program, but we really need more kids. If anyone has an idea of families in our district that, or students in our district that would like to attend, just mention it, just get the word out if you could. It is on our website, but we're looking for more kids, because the program is great, and to continue to run it in the future, we kinda need a larger group of kids to run that program at Salzman. All right? So if you can get the word out, appreciate that. Also, Chamber, Chamber of Commerce had the comedy night on October 12th. I reported that it was happening, it did happen, it was a huge, huge success. It was really funny, it was a great time. Suzanne and I had been there, and it was just a great outturn of people, and we, the proceeds that we have gotten from that fundraiser will go towards scholarships for our graduating seniors, so it was a huge success. So thank you all who came out. And of course, we want to thank the PTA for all you do. We can't do what you do, we can't do what we do without your help as well, so thank you, and thank you for the recognition.
I just wanna jump on, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanna make mention at a committee report, but I just want to give a real special thanks, and I don't even, I'm kind of a loss for words, for our marching band who performed at the Newsday Marching Band Festival. For those that were in attendance or saw the hundreds of videos that so many of us posted on social media, it was like, I've gone to them for several years, it was nothing like years past. The love, the support was palpable, and those kids were so proud of themselves, and I just, I couldn't not mention it. There were so many people in the crowd that weren't even from Farmingdale, wearing their green, wearing their ribbons, and it meant so much to everybody. But looking at the faces of those kids who went out there to do what they knew they needed to do was truly special, and to all the teachers and everybody that have supported those students along the way, it was just a really special night for them. That's it.
So the wellness fair is on the calendar, school calendar for November 15th. It has been postponed, but we will still be having a wellness fair, possibly April. We haven't, the committee has not decided on the date yet, but we'll report on that when we get confirmation on the date we're gonna have it. Okay? So it is scheduled on the calendar, which is postponed for 11/15. Okay? Thank you.
Last but not least, just a couple of Farmingdale PAL updates. Basketball registration for any child third through 12th is ongoing, and it's actually gonna close on this Friday, November 3rd. So for any late stragglers that are looking to sign up their sons or daughters for basketball, again, from grades three through 12, you have until this Friday, November 3rd. We are also doing registration for Farmingdale PAL lacrosse and deck hockey. Those are ongoing now, two very good programs. Rumor has it that the PTA wants to play the kids in an all-star hockey game. I hear Kate Kelly's got a wicked rista, so we're looking forward to seeing you guys in action. But again, oh, Dems fighting words. Thanks, guys.
I just wanna add one more thing. I had the opportunity
I had the opportunity to go to the Parent University that was held on October 12. What was different about it this year and years past, it's been math-focused. This year, there was a split between both a math and a literacy focus. It was incredible. It was such a wonderful opportunity to meet with so many talented educators, to learn more about their expertise in both the areas of mathematics and literacy. I was so, as an educator, I was just so excited to see the shift in the way in which we are teaching early literacy and phonics and phonological awareness. I've often attended the math ones, but I really just went to all the literacy ones. I was very excited to be there, and it was just a wonderful opportunity to have intimate conversations with those professionals who spend their days working to support all of your children, and it was well-attended, but next time you see that listed, I strongly encourage you to attend. You're going to just enjoy it so much. So, thank you to Dr. Olson for all the hard work that you and your staff put together. Teachers, we know how time-consuming it was for you to put those presentations together and to spend your night dedicated to working with families in our community, to just help them have a better understanding of the way in which we teach math and teach literacy in Farmingdale. So, thank you so much for that.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Can I have a motion now to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 1A through G, 2A, and 3A through D be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to accept the June 30 independent audit report?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education accepts the June 30, 2023 independent auditor report for study and file.
Mr. Motisi?
Thank you, Mr. Morales. First off, I'd like to publicly make sure I thank Diane Wood in our business office, who did the lion's share of this work over the summer. She was here on Saturdays, she was here on days where she was not supposed to be here. She changed some vacation plans to make sure that this audit went off as it should, and she really stepped it up this summer to really, really help us out when we were in a pinch with the close. So, thank you to her publicly. Unfortunately, Dave Teller from Noraki Smith was supposed to be here tonight to present to the Board of Education the findings, but he is very, very ill and could not make it. So, rather than sending someone in his place, he will be at the December meeting to formally present the results to the board. This report was discussed with the Audit Committee. It was a favorable report. I want to, I want to make sure that the board understands that the financial position of this district still remains very strong, and if Dave was here tonight, he would be sure to reiterate that and explain to you all the whys. But just a few highlights regarding the audit. There were no audit findings this year as a result of the independent audit, and that there was a surplus as a result of some additional state aid, Medicaid reimbursements, and interest income, and some tuitions between districts. Those were a bulk of what made up the profit that the district generated this year, or surplus, I should say, which really helped to offset a lot of the increased expenses that we saw with the large health insurance increase last year. If you remember, it was to the tune of about 15% of the increase that we saw last year. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have regarding the audit this summer or the financial statements. And again, Dave will be here to answer or present a more detailed version of these financial statements. And one last thing before any questions, after tonight's meeting, once the board approves the financial statements, they will be posted to the district's website for the community to view. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Motisi.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for motion now to accept the extra classroom activity funds independent audit.
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education accepts the June 30, 2023 extra classroom activity funds independent auditor report for study and file.
Mr. Motisi?
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Same thing as before, Mr. Teller will be here in November, December to present his findings. The major difference between this report and the financial statements is that these are done on a cash basis, so the auditing is much more detailed. They go, they look at almost every single transaction in the extracurricular fund. And again, there were no findings and no recommendations as a result of their audit work.
Any questions? Thanks again, Mr. Motisi. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Thompson, are there policies to review this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Morales. Draft policy 4327, homebound instruction, and 4327, the regulation for homebound instruction. Policy was reviewed recently by our Policy Committee. Policy is, and its corresponding regulation are from the Commissioner, New York State Board of Regents, and they enacted an emergency regulation that prescribed new requirements for instruction provided to students in a setting other than a school, including for students on suspension at home, hospital, or institution due to an illness or an injury, and those are all known as homebound instruction. The policy requires that with respect to alternative instruction, secondary students must now receive instruction for at least 15 hours per week, for at least three hours per day if possible, and elementary students must receive at least 10 hours per week, for at least two hours per day if possible. Thus, the policy was also updated to reflect those requirements. The Commissioner's regulation and the district's updated policy have been modified to include the eligibility requirements consistent with the new regulation to reflect that students are now eligible for homebound instruction when students are unable to attend school in person for at least 10 days during a three-month period, as documented by the student's treating healthcare provider. The current regulation states that students are eligible for homebound instruction if they will be absent from school for an estimated period of two weeks or more due to the Committee on Special Education, or CSE, placement, health problems, or suspension. Finally, the parent or guardian must be notified of the approval or denial of a request for homebound instruction within five school days, and that the district must create a written instructional delivery plan for students on homebound instruction. Are there any questions with that policy? Second, draft policy 5710, school safety and educational climate, the SSEC reporting, which was formerly known as violent and disruptive incident reporting, or VADER. This policy contains required changes from the New York State School Boards Association. It was also reviewed by our Policy Committee. The policy states that the board's commitment to promoting and maintaining the safety of students, staff, and visitors to the schools, and the policy states the commitment to maintaining a school environment free from harassment, bullying, and discrimination. The report title that schools are required to provide is formerly known as violent and disruptive incident reporting. It is now known as school safety and educational climate reporting, where each building principal is responsible for preparing a report of all the violent and disruptive incidents and material incidents of harassment, bullying, and discrimination that have occurred on school grounds or school-sponsored events. The reports are also retained by the school and submitted annually to the Commissioner and available at the State Education Department upon request. Are there any questions from the board with that policy?
The form that they've had in the past, are they going to keep the same form or add a couple of things to it? Are they going to provide a form that's different than it is now? Do you know?
So, the form for...
Reporting?
Reporting is similar, and it has similar categories. So, we just saw it for the first time this summer, and it is similar. And it also still coincides with the Dignity for All Students Act reporting, and that language around bullying and harassment is consistent with that. So, these policies will be on the December 6 agenda for approval. Draft policy 5152, admission of non-resident students will require further discussion with the board before public discussion at the December 6 board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. At this time, we'd like to open the meeting again for you guys for our second public participation session. When you come up to the mic, please state your name and address clearly, but the meeting Going once? Thank you, everybody. I call for motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody. Take care. We'll see you soon.
Good night.